Good evening, I'm David Assad, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, January 16th, 2020. We are meeting at one government center in the committee hearing room. This is a meeting of a local public body and as such is subject to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, commonly known as the open meeting law. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Brittany Farrier, the lady to my left. She's recording an audio version and four of her government TV, Alex Mello, is recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Present this evening are permanent members from my left to right, John Frank III, James Corkin, Attorney Carolyn Morissette, Vice Chair, and alternate members Dan Dupere and David Saber. The gentleman to my immediate right is William Rock, Director of Planning for the City of Fall River. Brittany, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 is amended?
Yes.
I declare the January 16th, 2020 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the board, including the petitioners, abudders, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chairman. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim, and as such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the zoning board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks; they are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement officer, and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short, administratively pursuant to our rules and regulations, which in short says, you sign up in the back and you can address the board on topics specific to zoning topics. So if anybody wants to talk about something other than one of the petitions dealing with zoning, there's a signup sheet in the back, sign up, and at the end of the meeting we'll allow you to address the board. Administratively pursuant to our rules and regulations, Section A, Paragraph 2, Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, Section 12, and Section 9-7 of the City Charter, the board shall elect a chair, vice chair, and clerk from its permanent members at its first meeting on the New Year. However, we cannot take this action this evening because it was not included in our notice; therefore, we will have it included in the February 2020 notice and take that action at that time. I cannot participate in Agenda Item Number 4. That item will be taken out of order and be chaired by Vice Chair Carolyn Morissette. Are there any questions before we begin? Hearing none, out of order, we're going to take Agenda Item Number 1. Weaver's Cove Industrial Park LLC, care of Richard A. Nylan Jr., Esquire, 1 New Street, Lot T21. It's a land court remand order for further consideration to make findings and provide reasons for the denial of variance request to allow wholesale and retail sales and auction of used, damaged, and undamaged operable and inoperable automobiles, trucks, other vehicles, trailers, boats, and construction farm equipment and machinery with accessory office temporary inventory storage, shipping receiving, and customer parking provided in the waterfront transit-oriented district, WTOD, district lot size 2,001,433 plus or minus square feet. Upon conclusion, the board shall issue an amended decision. So we have written correspondence from Attorney Nylan, who said he can't be here this evening and is requesting that this particular item be tabled until the February 2020 meeting. It's not 20, though, it's February, no, no, it's 2020, but it's not the 20th, what is it, the February 14th? No, deadline, strike that, February 20th, 2020 meeting. So if anyone is here this evening for that petition, that's the request that we have. The other, my only comment about this particular item is I would ask the Director of Planning to ask the Corporation Counsel for an opinion, because the original petitioner was Co-Pot. It was not Weaver's Cove Industrial Park LLC. They were the owner, they were and they still are, I believe, the owner of the real estate, and I just don't know whether or not the petitioner, who was Co-Pot, who has withdrawn from the case and given us written communication to that effect, whether or not this particular remand or this case still continues. So if we continue it to the February 20th, 2020 meeting and have the Director of Planning communicate with Corporation Counsel, maybe this issue can get resolved before the February meeting. So with that being said and hearing no opposition, can I get a motion to continue to the February 2020 meeting?
Motion to continue to the February 20th meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so that item is going to the February 20th, 2020 meeting. Carolyn, you can do number four, please, I'll step out.
Agenda Item Number 4, NNC Rental Properties Corporation, 102 Pine Street, Lot N1021, special permit request to construct 83 unit dwelling pursuant to Section 86-373D2, leaving requirements in the M and Arts Overlay District, lot size 5,625 square feet.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Dan Aguirre, I'm a Senior Project Manager at SciTech Engineering with addresses here in the city, as well as Dartmouth and Marshfield. As the chairman stated, this application is with regards to real estate owned by NNC Rental Properties Corporation of 83 Quarry Street, with regards to real estate that they own at 102 Pine Street. This is in a district labeled M for multi, as well as the Arts Overlay District. And under Section 86, 373D, subsection 2, the board can permit, granting of a special permit, the construction of a multifamily structure, allowing us to waive any of the underlying requirements, setbacks, area, lot coverage, building height, so basically just anything is up for grabs. Previously on this site, there was a three-family dwelling. I have an old assessor's card, and I don't know if I submitted it to you, but the building was raised, but this is what we were able to get from the assessor's office with regards to the structure that had previously been on the site, which was a three-family. It was originally constructed as a two-family, then it was expanded to add an additional one unit, making it the three. In the proposal that we have before you, again, is a three-unit apartment building. We have provided a proposed driveway, there is still one on the site now, which we would reconfigure, and we have also provided three off-street parking spaces, one for each of the units in the apartment building. We would be falling within the footprint we have shown, which is a 48 feet deep by 40 feet wide. We will request a special permit to have a five-foot side yard to the west, which is a vacant parcel, and then also to the street line. As you see the other homes in the area, specifically to the east, they're all right up close onto the street, and this lot is actually wide enough that we can fit our driveway on the side, extending all the way to the rear of the property, if we bring our building up front and push it over to the left. So again, under that section of zoning, the board does have the ability through a special permit to allow this activity to be done on this site. If you have any specific questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
Now, in an M district, you can have a three-family, correct?
Correct.
So you're, it's just the size of the property that's causing the issue?
Exactly, so under the arts, we don't need a variance under the M, because we can do it under the AOD.
And what are you lacking for the, for the C?
For the M?
Yes, for the M.
Okay, so in an M district, we would be required to have 5,000 square feet and 1,500 per unit.
So total of 8,000.
So we would have a total of 8,000.
What is it that you have?
We have 56.25. The frontage requirement would be 50, we have 75, so we're in excess of that. So that's why I was saying we have room to put our parking in on the side, and then the setbacks of 12 in the front, 10 in the side, and 15 feet on the rear would be what would be required under the M district.
And what do you have?
We have five-foot side yard to the west, we would meet, far exceed, the 10-foot requirement on the east, a five-foot front yard in lieu of the required 12, and in the rear, 10 to the deck where 15 feet is required, but the structure itself would be at least 20 feet from the rear lot lot.
So, four specific waivers?
Well, they're technically not waivers.
I know, four specific.
Four items that we would not meet the M district. And just let me check, and lot coverage as well, because lot coverage in the M district is 25%.
And so what would it be with this structure?
We're probably going to be at about 80%. And through the site plan review process, we'll be able to infiltrate the roof runoff, which is the majority of the impervious area on the site, to offset that, to ensure that there are no negative drainage issues in the neighborhood.
Any members, members of the board have questions? Is there anybody here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Mr. Ross, do you have any input?
Uses, if you look at the, are very similar to everything surrounding it, and actually there's five families, seven families, you know, so from a use standpoint, I think it's compatible with the neighborhood. Should you approve the special permit, I would like a specific condition requiring site plan review. Dan, I did have a question. It looks like your driveway, you propose, I couldn't tell whether you're proposing three or you were trying to double stack it for six.
Well, we, theoretically, we can have six, but there would be.
But you know that in real life, that doesn't work.
Well, it does when it's a family-owned building or that.
Right.
We do them in that nature. We had done a few different layouts of parking, but again, in this, in this district, we are allowed a combination of on-street parking.
Right.
And off-street parking, so by providing three, and there is more than enough space for an additional three street parking spaces in the neighborhood, which I think has been consistent with how the board has dealt with this neighborhood in the past on very large developments, not just a three-family.
And then the only other thing I would request is, in whatever the decision, that the, it's specific as to what you're granting the special permit to, you know, the area and the setbacks, and stipulate a minimum, minimum of three parking spaces. Because it looks like you could do three, but if you build it like this, you know, they could put more.
They could, yeah.
I mean, if there's a snow ban and whatnot, they could put six in.
They could.
They could do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a motion by member of the board?
Motion to grant.
So that would be a motion with the condition of site plan review.
Site plan review.
And condition.
Minimum of three cars, car, off-street parking.
Yeah, three parking spaces, relief on the side yard, in front.
Rear, lot coverage and lot area.
Front doesn't need it, correct?
No, the front does, we're going to do five.
Oh, five, okay.
It needs to be 12.
So it's area, side, west side, front, rear, and lot coverage.
Is there a second by member of the board?
Second.
All those in favor?
Just one quick question. On others' best permit, we had to duplicate this one.
This, my reading of the, my reading of the ordinance doesn't require it.
Oh, and the other thing, to grant it for two years, not one, because you can grant a special permit for two years. I don't want to come back.
Do you amend your motion to approve it?
Yeah, two years.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Second? Those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Yes, everybody's on that. Agenda Item 01, Harry and Sylvia Leach and Trustees, care of James Marsh Esquire, 966 Ray Street, Lot R474. This is an appeal of a decision of the zoning enforcement officer for the cease and desist stop work order issued in regards to the type of construction on the front of the residence and in relation to setback requirements in the S district. Good evening.
Good evening. Attorney Marsh.
Can I have your address, please?
Second?
Your address.
Sure. 628 Pleasant Street, New Bedford, Massachusetts. I represent the E. Palatier, Harry and Sylvia Leach and Trustees. We're here on appeal because in October 19, the city building inspector ordered the Leach and family trust to stop construction of an offset gable at the 966 Ray Street property, because it purportedly violated the city zoning bylaws governing the front yard setbacks. The zoning district for this is single-family residence, front yard setback is 25 feet. Before beginning construction, the trust obtained a building permit from the city Special Services Department for this structure, but by the time the city ordered this, the trust to cease building, the trust had spent thousands of dollars on this construction, 30 or so thousand. What the trust is claiming on appeal is that the building officer had properly approved the trust building permit, and then after the trust spent considerable amounts in reliance on that permit, the trust obtained vested right to build this structure. The trust asserts that the city is now essentially equitably stopped from interfering with the construction of this offset gable. The type of stoppable arises when a party like the city, by representation, admission, silence, induces another party, such as the trust in this case, to believe alleged facts. The other party justifiably relies and acts on this belief, and the other party will be prejudiced if the first party is permitted to deny the existence of those alleged facts. This type of relief, equitable stoppable, is an appropriate remedy, I think, where one party has changed its position to reasonably rely on a governmental action, of course, in this common law, have recognized this type of relief in cases like, this case, Marblehead Lee Derry, essentially similar to this case. Derry had a construction plan, it was approved by the town, construction proceeded, considerable amounts were spent on the construction, the construction like ours encroached into the front yard setback, the town sought to enjoy construction and remove that structure. The court denied the injunction on the basis of this type of relief, equitable stoppable. Essentially, receiving a permit and making significant expenditures in reliance on it is a type of exceptional circumstances, which we have here. The court was determined to warrant application of this type of relief. The city issued a facially valid building permit in this case to the trust, and relying on its validity, the trust invested considerably in construction costs. We understand, the trust does, that everyone dealing with a municipality and its agents is charged with knowledge of the restrictive provisions of lawfully adopted ordinances, such as a front yard setback. However, the trust didn't know or had no reason to know that the building officer lacked the authority to approve the application so as to render the trust's reliance unreasonable or unjustified. As such, the city is stopped from, we think the city is stopped from enforcing this order. Therefore, we're here to request that the board, this board order, building inspector withdraw the cease and desist on the grounds that I've presented, so construction can proceed. Any questions?
Well, what, what was allowed was construction of a gable, but the building inspector found that what was being constructed was not a gable, so can you address that?
Sure. What was represented was going to be a gable, whether, whether it's offset, where it extends beyond the drive, or over a driveway. What was understood, when, by my client, when they, when they submitted the application, was that it was going to be a gable, which was something that would be allowed. Whether it was a misunderstanding between the two, whether my client then considered the permit and went forth relying on that building permit, to build a structure that's presently there. The structure that's there, is it, is a gable, whether it's flush with a roof or it's actually offset in this case.
I mean, it doesn't appear to be a gable, it's me.
You know, the, my recollection, and I'm looking for the, in the file, but, let me, let me give you the citation. If it was a, are you familiar with the Buckland case? Buckland versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Norwell, 450 Mass., 357, where they talk about a small-scale addition in a non-conforming, on an non-conforming lot. They specifically talk about dormers and gables, if those are being put in, they may be small-scale and may not even require a variance or a special permit. My understanding, as Attorney Morissette has said, where I think the building inspector saw, or the, the plan that was provided was a gable that was going perpendicular to the roof of the house and attached to the house, not coming out into the offset, was what the building permit was issued. That's what I understand from looking at what was filed and looking at the application for the building permit, but.
Is your Exhibit 7, the carport, I mean, the, I'm sorry, the gable, what was submitted to the building commissioner?
This was submitted later. What was submitted to the actual, what was actually submitted at the time is the Exhibit at, what, what's?
But you've got, right there, that's the building, you've got the building application right in front of it.
Yeah.
And I think there's a, on the check-in stuff, there's, that's what I had seen, that's what I'm looking in the file.
Chair, and to respond to that, I.
Yeah, please.
I understand that there could be a misunderstanding based on the, the diagram here on the application.
That's not, that wasn't what was there.
But I submit to you that there were times beyond, there were times beyond the submission of the application and the approval of the permit, that the, the special services office visited the site and saw what was being done.
Okay.
And that issue, that's it. And then existing gable, as was going to be the new gable.
Yeah, and the current cables will only go out.
No, no, they're on, they're connected to that plane. So what you had was the extension. So I, that's just my, my opinion is, yes, you're correct, the building inspector issued the building permit, the building permit was issued based on what was presented on this, whatever, what date is this, on August 16th, 2018, and then when he did a physical inspection or site review, it wasn't a gable, it was more of a carport, and at that point issued the cease and desist.
But was there an intermediate inspection of the site?
There was.
Then that, after it had already extended beyond, or, you know, a carport? And that's the point that I get concerned, that if it was based on the drawing alone, I would have one opinion, but if he inspected it after the construction had been partially done and gave him an extension at that point, then he.
I don't know, I don't know whether it was that, before the inspection came, saw it and said, hey, this isn't the gable.
I do know that the building commissioner said that the, there was no inspection of the footings of those two columns that are out.
Yeah, but we can deal with that maybe in number two, if we get, depending on what we do with number one.
To answer your question, yes, there was a point in time where the inspector did come to the property in between the time that the building permit was issued and the time that the cease and desist was issued by the building inspector. They were out there because there was.
Who, who inspected it? Do you have a copy of the inspection?
I don't, I don't. The reason the person, the inspector was out there is because someone had complained because the, the permit wasn't in the window, and construction was proceeding, called the city, an inspector came out and asked that my client put the permit in the window. So at that point in time, there was an opportunity for, for the city to see what did work, was, what was being done and how far it had proceeded, which is to the point that it's pretty close, if not what you see in the pictures.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? So that's, that's what's being presented, to say that the building inspector, petition is for them, for us, to overturn the building inspector's cease and desist. So you've heard the presentation. I don't, we don't have any other evidence other than the, what's presented in our package. So based on that, did the building inspector act appropriately? Was he, in the exercise of his duties as the building inspector in issuing the cease and desist based on a plan that was provided, or did, was he in error by issuing the cease and desist, is the question. So, so we get, yes, uphold the building inspector's cease and desist or overturn it?
If we allow the, or sustain the, the building inspector's decision, are they then allowed to come in requesting a variance?
Yes, they have, that's the case, number two.
Oh, oh, that's great, that's all right.
Yes, no, I think they need to.
So, number one doesn't really affect, you know, I mean, if we say, go ahead anyway, then we don't need the two.
If we say, yes, that we don't need the two, other than, other than, I guess the, the building inspector will then have to require certain inspections of it, and I think, so not to jump to gun to number two, but yes.
I make a motion to uphold the building inspector's decision.
Second, John Frank, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay. So the building inspector's cease and desist is confirmed. Agenda Item Number 2, Harry and Sylvia Leach and Trustees, care of James Marsh Esquire, 966 Ray Street, Lot R474. This is the amended petition for a request for final, for relief pursuant to Section 86426, or a variance request to allow an offset gable in the front of an existing non-conforming dwelling, waiving front setback requirements in the S district, lot size 10,049 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. For the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering, with addresses here in the City of Fall River, Dartmouth, and Marshfield. Here this evening on behalf of 966 Ray Street, the Leach and Family Realty Trust, map R4, Lot 74, exact same piece of real estate that you were just discussing with regards to the building permit appeal. If you may recall, last month, this petition was initially filed as a variance under the direction of the building inspector, and then upon closer investigation, it was determined that we could most likely proceed under the special permit provisions of 86, we're going to call it 426C, but.
Let's use, yeah, let's be consistent, 86, 426, subsection C.
That deals with existing non-conforming, single and two-family structures. We have this single-family home, which is a conforming condition, it's a single-family district, on a non-conforming parcel with only 10,000 square feet of land, and a non-conforming side setback of eight feet. The existing front yard setback is 25 feet and contains an existing U-shaped driveway that comes in probably 40 or 50 feet out from each other. In the package that you have submitted from Attorney Marsh, you'll see a number of photographs of a proposed, actually constructed, structure.
No, it's constructed, it's, you know, call it, whether it's constructed, it's there, this is.
That we'll call an addition slash carport at this point. It does have two foundation sonar tubes towards the front of the building. There's a gable end open, and it actually spans the existing U-shaped driveway that sits below it. In the photographs, you'll see that to the north of the property, there is an existing garage on the north entrance of the building. Dr. Leach, and who is handicapped, and I think you'll see some photos of his vehicle and his handicap placard, and actually, I think, a photo of him as well, has a difficult time using the garage, being able to get out of the vehicle because of his handicap status, opening a door, negotiating the steps up into the house. So what this carport was intended to do is to allow him to pull up in front of the house, which is at an elevation that's a little bit easier to walk. which is at an elevation that's a little bit easier to work with, some wider steps, and room to open up a vehicle door and get out of a vehicle and into the vehicle. So it's to give him some shelter so that he can get in and out of the vehicle during inclement weather. Under that section of zoning, the board does have the ability, under a special permit, to allow the expansion of a non-conforming structure if the board feels that the proposed nonconformity is no more or not more substantially detrimental than the existing nonconformity. So in my opinion, when we're on Ray Street and we look at some of the homes that are built there, many of them well within the 25-foot offset, front yard setback, this structure that has now been built with a setback of eight feet would not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and would clearly not be more substantially detrimental than the existing nonconformity of an eight-foot setback to the north, where you can see the proximity of, to the house, to the north as well. The proposed structure will allow Dr. Leach to get in and out of his vehicle, access his home, and would be of no detriment to the neighborhood or the zoning district that it sits in. So we would ask that the board allow the structure to remain. Of course, it would be subject to a new building permit and any and all inspections that the building inspector would require. If you have any specific questions regarding the structure itself, but I think you can see them in the photos, or the use of it, we'd be more than glad to answer those questions.
Questions, members of the board? Structure exists, it's been constructed.
And it's right up on the sidewalk, correct?
No, it's eight feet, it's eight feet from the sidewalk. Actually, yeah, there is a sidewalk, yeah, yes. I surveyed it myself, it's eight feet from the, from the layout line, and the sidewalk falls within that.
Picture looks like it's closer than that.
It's eight feet from the street.
Street layout, and the sidewalk is within the street layout, so the sidewalk is just about back up to the layout, and then there's an eight-foot section before we get to the structure itself. See if I can find which photo might help.
There's a photo, and I don't think it's the same house. Oh, the one at the end? No, that's not the carport.
No, those were included. Those are show you-
Those are rebutting properties.
In the neighborhood, there are structures that are very similar.
So probably-
There's one that's painted white, that's right around the corner. That one?
Yeah.
That one's right around the corner.
Right, right.
Doesn't have the nice coupole on top like the other ones in Leach and built.
Yes, there actually isn't a photo that shows the front of it and where its proximity is, but I did survey this myself, and of course, it would be subject to the plan that you are approving, which would be eight feet from the layout line, and if for some reason someone were to tell you otherwise, that I was wrong, it would have to be moved. But I can assure you that that's not the case.
Any other questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay? Well, that's what, that's the history of what happened. Yeah, David, yes, David, you can leave, you're all done, if you want to leave. So we can, let me, let me just read subsection C. Alteration to a structure which encroaches upon one or more required yard or setback areas, where the alteration will comply with all current setback yard, building and lot coverages and building height requirements, the provisions of this clause C shall apply regardless of whether the lot complies with current area and frontage requirements. That's the first sentence. Then, next sentence. In the event that the building inspector determines that the non-conforming nature of such structure would increase by the proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change, the Board of Appeals may buy a finding, which shall not require a supermajority required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48. So instead of it being that all four, either unanimous or four to one, it could be a three to two vote to approve, if we say that there's a finding that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental than the non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. So that's the, the structure or the model of subsection C. But if we say, none of that applies, then we go back to the variance standard of, is there something with the shape, topography, soil condition dealing with the property? And is that a hardship unique to the property, not to Dr. Leach, which would be a personal hardship, which is not something the board should consider?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is this a bifurcated hearing?
No.
No, they don't have to make, first make that it's not more substantially detrimental?
Well, we should, I would like to do it that way, but I want to see where they're going, what the board's thinking, that we should have, if we have the finding that says that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental than the non, than the existing nonconformity structure to the neighborhood, then we can go to the special permit part and give the, the conditions, if there are to be, conditions such as have it inspected and new building permit issued.
I'll make that motion.
Make that-
That it's not more detrimental.
So you make, so the first part, that it is not more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. Okay. Do I have a second? Second by Jim Corkins, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? One, two, three. Carolyn?
No.
Assad, no. So that's a three to two. So, but I think it still, I think it still continues. I think it still continues, because now we don't have the supermajority. Assad and-
Continues as a variant?
No, continues under section C.
We only need three out of five.
Three out of five to continue going with this finding, that now whether we can grant the special permit. Okay, so you're shaking your head yes, you're making a motion to grant the special-
I'll make a motion to grant the special.
With or without conditions, that the building inspector-
Inspected.
Be inspected.
And as the planner?
Pardon me? I'll ask the, I'll ask the director of planning, do you have anything that you, we should consider before?
No, that, it just needs to be, you know, it needs to comply with inspections.
All right, so is building in accordance with the building code and inspections? That's your motion. All right, second? Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? One, two, three. Carolyn?
No.
Assad, no. Well, that passes without the supermajority, so we get the special permit, and it's done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, attorney Marsh. Who wants to, who's got number three? Robbie Salibi, care of Arthur Frank Esquire, 676 Charles Street, Lot B. 1054. This is an amended petition for special permit request to construct a 12-by-19 addition to the back of existing nonconforming, single-family home in the A. 2 District, pursuant to section 86426 of the zoning ordinance, Lot Size 6,800.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Arthur Frank, I'm a lawyer with offices at 209 Bedford Street. And with me is Mr. Robbie Salibi. His company purchased 676 Charles Street this past November, and what he is looking for is permission from this board to add a bedroom to the back of the house on the first floor. His plan is that this is where his parents are gonna be, and the two upstairs bedrooms are gonna be for when his, his sister visits, they have children. He also wants, just wants his parents on one level. As you can see, the proposed addition is gonna hold the current sideline setbacks, which, because this is pre-existing nonconforming, we don't have 20-foot side setbacks, but we do have a 15-foot side setback, and on the other side, it'll be 14 plus or minus feet. He doesn't have 10,000 square feet of area, he has 6,800 square feet, he only has 46 feet of frontage, not 100. His rear yard, he can hold, obviously, because he has 94 feet to the back sideline, and he only needs 30. His coverage, I believe, is, still will be third, somewhere in the 30% area, and it's a, it's, it's not a very tall house, I think it's, it's not more than 45 feet high.
Oh, no. It's two-story, I think, so it's probably no more than 20, I don't know.
Okay.
That's right here, yeah. That's the question.
The building in the back?
Yeah.
It's a garage. It's actually a garage.
That's a garage?
Just a garage.
It's bigger than the house.
It's not, actually, it's-
We'd probably have to ask Mr. Gardeski, maybe his pen slipped, it was rather, but it's a garage.
Okay. Because the proposed addition is to the house, that's it?
That's it. It's one room.
One bedroom, that's a bedroom. One story or two story?
It's two stories.
Two-story bedroom?
No, no, it's one story, but we, we're gonna extend it to the second floor. So, because it's, it's a two-story houses, so on the first floor, we're just gonna make the bedroom, and when you go up the stairs, the second bedroom, we're just gonna extend it and make a, a larger bathroom in, in between, so they can share.
So you're making the bedrooms upstairs larger?
Larger.
And a bathroom?
And a bathroom.
And adding a bedroom. So it is a two-story addition?
It's a two sto-, so, it's gone both-
It was, it was a two-story, one-family home.
Got it, but the addition isn't just a one-story-
Yeah, I think he wants to keep the same roof line going up.
Okay.
He just have a salt box sticking out of the back.
No, no, I got it. So it's gonna be consistent with the whole house.
Exactly, correct, exactly.
And so the first floor's gonna be the bedroom upstairs, we're gonna have a bathroom.
Yeah, I think, maybe I've given you some floor plans, that you can see where downstairs, it's just, there's only one kitchen downstairs.
Yeah, we have, we have something like an existing, they know.
Okay. Members of the board, any further questions? No, we know what we're gonna do. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? And under the way the new petition, I guess, is brought, it's being brought as a special permit under 86426, that allows us to act as a special permit to grant this, and it doesn't need to be a bifurcated hearing. So, any other questions? Motion to grant with conditions? Motion to deny? What do you want to do?
I make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant, John Frank, site plan, site plan, do you agree with that? Mr. Director of Planning?
Don't need it.
He doesn't need it.
Okay.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure for the driveway that there's enough, because the driveway runs up the, so.
It doesn't affect it?
It doesn't.
Just in the back going up?
The turn to get into the garage is what I'm concerned with, that would be the question. It's 12 feet, seems like it.
Okay, so we have a second to grant? No, we have a second, we have the motion to grant from John Frank, do I have a second? Second, Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion?
For two years.
Pardon me?
Special permit, two years.
Yeah. Let's, let's do a two, a two-year, so they don't have to come back for an extension.
Oh, two years, yes.
Sorry. Okay? All those in favor of that petition, of that motion? One, two, three. Carolyn, four. Assad, five. Okay, so that special permit is granted for two years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number two. Are we ready for agenda item number two? Hey, what happened to number four? The one that I couldn't sit on, is that granted or denied?
It was granted.
What, you're gonna stay here for the meeting? It's okay, you stay.
Pardon me? It's gonna be a while.
It's okay, let him stay. Agenda, agenda item number two, estate of Edwin Amorin, 320 Renaud Street, Lot E. 206466. This is a variance request to subdivide the existing parcel into three lots, leaving an existing two-family home on one lot of lot size 5,921, plus or minus square feet, while constructing a new single-family home on each of the remaining two lots. Proposed size is 5,935, plus or minus square feet, and 6,183, plus or minus square feet, waiving requirements in the A. 8 District.
R. 8.
What did I say?
A.
A. 8, R. 8.
You got the A. 3 on your mind.
Yeah. R. 8 District, my apologies, single-family residence district. Oh, yeah, one, two, three, we got those all, we did all that independent research ready for you.
Thanks.
I even have the book and page written down, I looked.
I've got them all right here.
I know you do.
Good evening. For the record, Dan Aguirre of Sitech Engineering, with addresses here in the city, as well as Dartmouth and Marshville. I have to say it.
No, no, say it, you do, you do your-
With regards to the real estate at 320 Renaud Street and Grattan Street, on behalf of the estate of Edward S. Amorin, you'll see in the variance package that we have the legal documents with the required signature of, I'm assuming it's pronounced, Leonice Amorin, who is the handling the estate. So the real estate before you, we have an existing two-family dwelling located at the very corner of Renaud Street and Grattan Street, in a single-family district. So from the get-go, we're dealing with a non-conforming condition.
Which was the first lot acquired by the family.
Of the family, right, dating back to 1931, Book 442, Pitch 41.
That is correct.
So over a number of years, from 31, 10 years later in 41, and then another seven years later in 48, this family, the Amorins, had acquired these, three separate parcels of land. And then the deed that I've submitted, which is the current deed, as it's gone through three or four different estates and probates and everything else. So through that process, everything ultimately was lumped in to one deed for the sake of paperwork. The city of Fall River, to this day, still has these three separate lots assessed as different parcels, with the map and lot numbers shown, that I have shown on this plan as part of the petition as well. I've also submitted three separate, a butter's cards for these three separate parcels with their assessed values, the existing, the two-family home, I believe, is at about two and change, and then each of the vacant lots, I think at around $89,000 each, that they've been paying taxes on since this time. And I'm sure the chairman will, will, will agree with this, I don't know why, at some point in time, at least two of these parcels have not been combined for zoning purposes or combined in the assessor's office. I can understand that they wanted to collect the taxes on the three individual parcels, and that's, sometimes that happens. Or there are different sections in the bylaw that deal with minimum lot sizes of lots having 50 feet of frontage and at least 5,000 square feet, and not merging with adjacent lots that have at least 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet. But I, I really can't find a section of the bylaw that would nail this down. So when I met with the building inspector, he felt that since, if we look at the whole thing as one, and put it back to the way that everyone has it assessed to, is probably the cleanest and easiest way to deal with it. However, and, and part of that is because we don't know which two would have merged. Would it have merged to the point where, once you got to 80 feet of frontage and 8,000 square feet, does the merger end there? Is it because of the non-conforming nature of the lot, being a two-family? I don't know the answer to these things.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, 'cause I'm prepared to talk about merger time.
Well, there you go, I, I'll get a, I'll get a lesson tonight. So what the applicant asked us to do, and I explained to them, you know, we don't know how this, how this will go, however, when we look at the neighborhood, excuse me, we look at the size of the homes, I, I think we have a strong argument that these lots could be, and I do think they need a variance, so I'm not coming before you saying that I don't think these lots have merged. However, I can't tell you how they've merged, or which two may have merged, or if all three of them have merged. So the cleanest and easiest way for dealing with this estate, and the title moving forward, is to seek the zoning relief, in hopes that this board would grant that, and allow these three lots to move forward, as was intended by the Amorins when they purchased them many years ago, over a span of almost 20 years. It is a very unique situation where we have the lot pushed down into the corner of one lot, because it was just one lot when they bought it. There is an existing structure on Lot 64, rather large, white barn structure.
Structure, poultry, they used to have.
So that potentially could be a reason why there was no merger of 64 with 65 and 66. I, I honestly, I don't know the answer to that, so if the chairman can enlighten me, I, I, it would be great to know that, so I could at least move back and explain that to the client. But, but we would ask that, because we have a corner lot, we have lots that, that exceed the area and frontage of a few of the lots in the neighborhood, will be constructing single-family homes, and actually, would be a benefit to the city, would be a benefit to the neighborhood, to allow two new single-family homes to be built in that area. And we've done, and again, it doesn't always mean much, but further down on, on Grattan, two, two lots down, there was another series of lots there that we actually received relief of 66 feet of frontage and 6,183 square feet, and we built a few single-family homes over there, probably about 10 years or so ago. That's to the east.
We know that that's not precedent.
Nope, and that, that's how I started the explanation.
I just wanted to be sure, I put it for the record.
But I just want to understand that, so, 'cause sometimes people will say, well, yeah, the lots are smaller, because they were always that way. Well, that's not the case. There have been many variances that have been granted in the area, allowing a reduction in lot size from the R. 8 requirement of 80 feet of frontage and 8,000 square feet, which I don't think many of the lots in the neighborhood meet those requirements. That's all.
Any questions before I start on the merger?
Yeah. How do you think of merge?
I will let you know, the assessors do not take it upon themselves to, as a rule, they do not take it upon themselves to merge the lots.
Well, they do it often. And we had this conversation last month.
It happened years ago.
So, it does happen when it shouldn't happen sometimes, and then we still have to come before this board. But they will collect taxes on them.
Of course they will.
Yeah.
All right. So, there's this case that I think does a pretty good job of simple language. Tempiero versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of Weston. It was August sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, it was decided, the site is nine ninety-three Northeast Second, twelve eleven. It's an appeals court case. So, and the opinion was written by Judge Graham. The discussion goes like this. Common law merger. It's well settled that, under the common law merger doctrine, when adjacent non-conforming lots come into common ownership, they are normally merged and treated as a single lot for zoning purposes. And they reference Hoffman versus Board of Zoning Board of Appeals of Cambridge, seventy-four Mass. Appeals Court, eight oh four. Because variances are not allowed as a matter of right and should be sparingly granted, and the court references Luzier versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Peabody, four forty-seven Mass. five thirty-one, at page five thirty-four, two thousand six decision. The purpose of the statutory grandfather provision is, to be sure, to protect a once-valid lot from being rendered unbuildable for residential purposes. And they cite Sturgis versus Chilmark, three eighty Mass. two forty-six, two sixty-one, a nineteen eighty case. But only if the compliance with the statutory conditions. The condition that the non-conforming lot not be held in common ownership with any adjoining land represents a statutory condition of a principle of longstanding application in the zoning context. A landowner will not be permitted to create a dimensional nonconformity if he could have used his adjoining land to avoid or diminish the nonconformity. And that was cited out of the Planning Board of Norwell versus Serena, twenty-seven Mass. Appeals Court, six eighty-nine, at page six ninety. It's a nineteen eighty-nine decision. In considering the application of the common ownership requirements of Massachusetts General Lodge, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, it is the most recent instrument of record prior to the effective date of the zoning change that controls Adamaewitz versus Ipswich, three ninety-five, Mass. seven fifty-seven, seven sixty-two, nineteen eighty-five case. So, the deed that I think we have was in existence and owned when we adopted the new zoning regulation, and I'll use the July eleventh, two thousand thirteen date, so that would have changed it.
Well, well, before that.
Well, but so, they owned it, it was all together. The fact that they acquired them at different times in the past for zoning purposes, it says, you can't, they come all together to make it work. So, when you look at lots E twenty sixty-six, E twenty sixty-five, and I think the acquisition was E twenty sixty-six, then they got E twenty sixty-four, then they got E twenty sixty-five, they all merged together. Now, for the review of the zoning for twenty twenty, based on the zoning ordinance of two thousand thirteen, you've got one lot, all three lots, all of these non-conforming lots merged together to create, I don't wanna talk about the use of the two-family, which is a pre-existing nonconforming, but the lot size now becomes this one lot that meets or exceeds the R eight district. So, that's, the sequence of them.
I agree they've merged. That's.
No, no, but you're saying which one happened first, which one happened. It didn't matter, because they had it all together at the time of the zoning change. So, now, what do we do? We're confronted with our zoning ordinance that gives us that, you can't make it smaller if you have a conforming lot. Unless now, I guess we do have the authority under eighty-six four eighty-two, which says this is, the zoning board has the authority to do lots of things. But how do we go about when we're prohibited from changing lot lines and doing things for the purposes of, no yard, let me give you the citation of this, eighty-six thirty-four, applicability of district regulations. No yard or lot existing on the effective date of the ordinance from which this chapter is derived shall be reduced into mention an area below the minimum requirement set forth in this chapter. The yards or lots created after such effective date shall meet at least the minimum requirements established by the chapter. So, that's, so you've got this merged lot. Yes, it's larger than everything in the area, almost. I think that other one, E twenty forty-eight, may be. You have an R eight, now what you wanna do is have the board create these other three lots. That'll be three non-conforming lots. So, that's the analysis from the chairman on that particular issue. But there's four other board members to vote and give their opinions on it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I've discussed this with the client previously. We do have the ability to subdivide the parcel, providing the appropriate frontage and area requirements. However, it would most likely require a side yard setback to the existing two-family dwelling. In order to get eighty feet of frontage for one of the lots, let's take the Grattan Street side, for instance. We have an existing fifty. If we take the additional thirty, that's gonna bring us close to requiring a side yard setback, or actually, a rear yard setback to the existing two-family. You following where I'm there?
I do. No, no, I was trying to be innovative to come up with a solution.
Right, so, and we've gone through this. Doing it the other way, with putting both lots on, sorry, on Renaud Street, would require a waiver of frontage for what would be sixty-five, for instance. So, I think the best way that I can recommend to my applicant to proceed, and if the board will allow us, is to present a modified plan, just creating two lots with the request of the rear yard setback on three twenty. That would be the only relief we would need to request.
Can you draw it over here?
Yep, I'm gonna draw it on this one.
So, you keep the pre-existing, non-conforming, two-family.
I'll start down here. So, what I would do is, we'd create a lot line here.
Be two lots then.
Two lots. Three twenty would sit on this lot, over eight thousand square feet, over eighty feet of frontage, actually, one hundred and twenty-two. This new lot would have eighty, so that's the fifty plus the additional thirty, and would be over eight thousand square feet as well.
Okay. So, then what?
The only relief we would need is most likely, because this would be the rear yard setback, where twenty feet would be needed. I don't think we'll meet that setback. That would be the only relief we would need.
And you wouldn't need any relief for this?
No, this home.
No, that's gonna be a completely conform.
That home will be built to the conforming setbacks. This lot will be completely conforming. The only relief would be that rear yard setback.
And what do you think it would be?
If I had a scale, I'm gonna guess, I don't know, it would be at least ten. I'm not asking you to act on that. What I'm asking is to allow me to table the matter and bring you a plan, so you can vote on what is that. Just so that they don't get, almost rather than withdrawal, without prejudice.
No, come back with a new plan.
Come back with a new plan, cutting down to two lots, show you that setback, and make sure that you're okay with it, and act on that plan.
Okay. Thank you.
So, is that your motion or request to table it to the next meeting?
Yes, that would be my request to table the matter, so I could give you a revised plan, two lots, and I believe the only relief needed would be the rear yard setback to three twenty.
Are you still removing the garage and the parking for the two-family? I didn't see your layout.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I should have showed.
It has to be a condition.
I was thinking about going this way and grant.
Well, no.
And it's not a frontage. Yeah, I understand.
If we do this, that's gonna come down anyway, no matter what. This would be the rear yard. We would need relief for this rear yard. That would be eighty, eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-two feet of frontage.
Perfectly conforming lot, this lot.
Perfectly. Other than the two-family, which is pre-existing, this would need to be twenty, and I don't think we'll meet twenty, because we're gonna grab.
We could condition that you put the parking for this over here.
Parking for both, absolutely.
Okay.
Down already. We would potentially need this relief, yet I don't think that's the problem.
So, that may be with the, is there anyone that came out this evening in favor of this petition? You're in favor of the petition. Did you hear, did you hear what he's, what we're talking about?
Yes.
Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. So, opposed to it?
Yes.
So, did you, did you hear what they wanna do by coming back next meeting? Do you want, do you wanna give me the opposition tonight, or would you like to come back the next meeting and talk about, instead of a three-law, a two-law proposal?
Okay, fine.
No, I'm asking you, Mr., you decide what you wanna tell me.
Okay, I think.
You come back next meeting.
Do you want me to show them the plan? Two fifty Kennedy Street, but I think they will be there if we come back.
Okay.
Another proposal.
All right. The young lady next to you?
Okay, Julia Josman, I live at two oh eight Frost Street.
Yes.
And I agree with the two, for the two lots.
No, but, thank you. But come back next meeting.
Yes.
Because that's when we're going to finish it. If, unless the board decides no and do something else.
I agree.
Thank you. Madam?
Robin Sheehan, three fifty Frost Street.
Yes.
And, um, I'm glad to meet you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? All right.
I hope that we, is it?
Table to the February, February twenty, twenty twenty meeting.
Clarified plan.
Clarified plan and decision by the board. Jim Corkin, second by Carolyn. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. We'll see you February twentieth, twenty twenty. Thank you. Number three. Ready for number three? That's you? Anna Cabral, sixty-seven Narragansett Street, Lot S ten nineteen, special permit request pursuant to section eighty-six four twenty-four, to extend existing non-conforming use of property containing a single-family dwelling by converting existing garage into an additional living unit in the commercial mill district, lot size eight thousand one hundred and ninety-eight.
Good evening again. For the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering, with addresses here in the city, Dartmouth and Marshville. This application with regards to sixty-seven Narragansett Street may seem familiar to you. I don't know if it was last meeting or two meetings ago. The owner of the property had submitted a variance for this exact petition. And as we kind of alluded to before, he submitted a variance plan, because that's what the building inspector told him to submit. So, what he did back then was.
Excuse me. Mr. Sevigny, if you don't mind, if you wanna talk, take it off. You can stay and listen, but I mean, the way the construction is, it's, I have stereo over here.
So, I don't wanna say at no fault of this applicant, but they did what the building inspector asked. They filed a variance. At the eleventh hour, I think it was the, maybe the week before the meeting, I was asked to prepare a new plan, which I wasn't part of the initial petition, and then presented as well. Once I got the petition in my hands to see what we were dealing with in preparing the plan, I explained to the applicant that we probably, or I would have moved this, or tried to move it as a special permit under the section eighty-six four twenty-four that we're doing this evening. However, the paperwork was already filed from the building inspector for the variance. I came and I gave you my best argument. We were denied on the grounds of seeking a variance. So, the only thing that the applicant could then do is, one, either repeal that decision, or, two, refile as a special permit. So, I explained to him the difference between the two with regards to hardship and things like that, and he agreed. Put the paperwork together, let's file a special permit, and let's see how we make out with that. At the end of the day, identical. Identical plan, except with the word special permit plan rather than variance plan, and the notations of why we're here and what we requested you do for us. So, we are in a commercial mill district. For some of you that don't know, this is right behind Rogers Funeral Home as you're going up Narragansett Street. So, if you look at the plan to the top left, you'll see Rogers Funeral Home, that's their parking facility, and then further up the plan, that's the corner of North Main, where Rogers Funeral Home is, directly across the street, is the existing very large commercial mill complex, where I used to play stickball in the little stadium that we used to call it in the back there. Directly across the street, we have a three-family home, next to that, another three-family, a two and a four on the sides of us, a three behind us, and a two further behind that. And the reason I call those things out is because those are all conforming uses in this commercial mill district. There's one non-conforming use in this district, is our single-family house, being out of place in this commercial mill district. A single-family home is not allowed in a commercial mill district. So, part of our argument to you under section eighty-six four twenty-four is that we have an existing non-conforming use, that under that section, we can come and seek a special permit from you, similar to all the others with regards to not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use, and that the board can allow us to use this existing garage in the rear of the structure as another dwelling unit. Building's already built, all they're gonna do is modify the interior of the building. Off-street parking will be provided, as it already is, for the number of units that we have on the site. And what's important is, again, in this commercial mill district, multi-families are allowed by special permit. Now, we're not moving forward or requesting that you allow the multi-family based on that, and the reason being is we don't meet the ten thousand square foot area requirement for a commercial mill district. Otherwise, that would be a different section of zoning to go through. So, what we're asking for you to do tonight is to make the determination that utilizing this for an additional dwelling unit would be no more substantially detrimental than the existing non-conforming use, which is a single-family dwelling. In fact, what this will do is we'll now bring the use of this property in compliance with the commercial mill district, which is multi-family dwellings. The non-conforming nature of the area of the lot, frontage, we're fine on, we exceed the one hundred-foot requirement. The area requirement is still deficient as it is now. So, this property, by allowing this to take place, brings us closer to conforming with the commercial mill district.
How is that? Because it's not attached, so it's not a two-family.
It's considered a multifamily property. We do, we do it all the time on other properties, where we do two-unit buildings, two-unit build, like, they're not, they don't have to be connected. It's considered a multifamily use for the property. A condominium development, for instance, is considered multifamily. If you remember down on Globe Street or Evelyn's Way, there have been a number of projects that we've proceeded under that provision, that a multifamily development, it doesn't say one multifamily structure, it's multifamily use in the commercial mill district. So, if we had four mills, for instance, on one property, you can move that all as being one development of being multifamily use.
What are your dimensions on that? There are no dimensions on that.
On the structure itself? They're not changing it. I could add dimensions to it, but actually, you know what? I might have.
If it's only on the top, residential use is only on the top floor.
Only on the second floor. It's garage on the.
I've been in it.
Say again?
Oh, the, the, the additional unit they want, it's strictly, it's only in the, it's only the second story. The downstairs garage is still a garage.
We'll call it twenty-one by twenty-one. And that's only because the initial plan called it twenty feet, five inches by twenty feet, three inches. So.
Kind of framed out into an office or whatnot.
It's usable space now.
It's a big room that's got a framed in for a bathroom, which they could do. You know, once you throw the kitchen in, that's your, that's where you kinda get your problem. And, because I've inspected it with the building commissioner, and I've actually been up in it, and it's a big open area with a framed in, it's not sheet rocked or insulated, framed in, and you can see the frame in where the bathroom is, and it's just a big open area, like an office would be.
Any other questions, members of the board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? So, if we proceed under eighty six four twenty four, first thing we have to make the finding, we have to make the determination that the existing nonconforming use is not, strike that. That the change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood. So, you've got this pre-existing nonconforming single-family. We have a, so the use is nonconforming. The size of the lot is nonconforming. So, do we want to compound that if you make the determination that you've got this nonconforming? And it talks about then the existing nonconforming use, the use in the neighborhood is the single family. The argument add another unit, now it becomes a multifamily property, multifamily use. So-
Which is an allowed use.
Which is, which is an allowed, which is an allowed use. Yes, I'm, I'm getting there, that we go from non, nonconforming to an allowed permitted use, that, use-wise.
I find, Mr. Chairman, I move that we find that it is not more, substantially more detrimental to the, uh-
Existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood. Okay. So, that's Jim Corkin's motion for a finding on that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Dan Dupierre. Any discussion on that particular motion? And this, just let me just put the caveat, this is not, you need a majority vote to get this to go through. Okay. Okay. So, Dan Dupierre, yes. Carolyn John, yes, no?
No.
No?
Yes, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So, John Frank, yes. Jim Corkin's, yes. Dan Dupierre, yes. Carol Lamarrasette, no. David Assad, no. So, that finding doesn't work. Okay, thank you. Uh, we did agenda item number four. Agenda item number five. Marcelino Repose of the Third, two thirty-two Alden Street, Lot K eleven thirty. Special permit request to convert the existing two-family with storefront into a three-family home in an, it's published as an A two, but it's, A three, but it's an A two district. Lot size one thousand five hundred and thirty-five square feet.
Good evening. My name is Marcelino Tolo, with Amherst in the city. I'm looking to seek permission to change the use of a unit in this building that I've just purchased to have a residential unit.
Okay. So, it's currently a two-family dwelling.
Correct.
That's what it's assessed at. You want to add another unit in it?
Well, there's already a unit on the, on the base floor currently, which is vacant. They use as storage, could have been-
Well, that's what it took. The assessor's information is that it's only been used for storage, and the second floor was used for storage. It was really being used as a single-family dwelling. So, you want to add, it, it's always been assessed as a two-family. You want to add another unit to it.
Correct.
Tell me about, there's no parking, it's a fifteen hundred square foot lot. You don't, there's no-
There was never any, any issue with-
There never was, never is, yes.
With parking and everything. I, uh, I've done a couple repairs myself, been there at all hours of the day. I've never had, uh, an issue with finding parking. None of the tenants have ever complained of any parking.
Has it happened now? I don't think there's any, is there a tenant in there now?
Yes, yeah, on the second and third floors.
Okay. Members of the board, any questions? And I, and I guess he's doing it as a special permit. Let me just keep on going. A special permit on, as being the expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming lot. So, can here, can here, is it going to be, uh, allow reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change where it determines that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood in use? So, you've got this, so anyway, that's, that's what we're dealing with on the special permit side of life. Mr. Chairman, do you have it, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chairman.
Is it directed?
Is there any, uh, other than it says on the plan, is there any documentation or information that in the past, that that ground floor was used as like a, a store?
Um, there is nothing I know of. It looks like that it could have been, you know?
The assessor, the assessor's notes, you, you, did you bring the assessor's notes?
Um, I believe so, maybe.
Because if you look under the comments, it says that the basement was used as wood shaving, uh, storage only, and the second floor was storage only.
Okay.
Well, that was based on whatever the-
Yeah, I mean, whatever, current site does it was. Whatever it was, but I, anyway. So-
There's already two means of interest as well.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, it's obviously conforms as a two-family, it's the additional unit that's, you're looking for. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Members of the board, you got?
If I forget a hearing?
That, if you want to do it that way, we can certainly make, have the finding first, and then if you can get by the finding that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, then we can go on to discuss it. So-
Any views from the city?
Director of planning, any?
No, I, I, I looked at it, and if it was existing with, and there was evidence for the store, then, you know, I would say that, you know, what's the, it's a, it's a less, less intensive use from a, a former store to a residence, but, um, somehow that, I think that evidence needs to be, would need to be within the, in the file and presented.
So, do you want to make, is there a motion that-
I have a motion that's more detrimental.
That it is more detrimental to the neighborhood?
To the parking concerns.
Okay. So, we have a motion from John Frank that it's more detrimental. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Carol Lamarrasette, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of John's? Two, three, four. Dan, yes? All right, so, you can't get by the two parts of the hearing. The determination is that it's more detrimental to the neighborhood. So, you can't, we're not granting you the special permit. But thank you for coming. Agenda item number six. Manju Nagpal, four sixty-three Williams Street, Lot G five seventy-five. A variance request to erect an eighteen by seventeen carport, waiving requirements in an A two district. Lot size two thousand eight hundred and seventy-six plus or minus square feet.
Mr. Nagpal, I'm representing my wife, she owns the building.
Yes.
There's a debt in her family, she could not come in. All I'm requesting is like, uh, to build a carport, because there's a parking space. And it's not like, you know, enclosed or anything, just a roof and four pillars.
Okay, but it's a structure, and you have the pillars.
Yes.
The pillars are going to-
Pillars are like, uh, uh, iron.
Yes.
They're not like, you know, in the ground, they're just like bolted to the ground. So, if you go buy it in a carport, you could just put it, this is actually more secure. Uh, then it will not like, you know, blow away with the wind or anything. So-
Okay, so this is the zoning board of appeals. The zoning says if you have a structure, and you have to have side yard requirements, you can't just build or put the structure right on the property line. And as I'm looking at the plan, I don't, I think it's right on the property, I didn't see any offset there. I was trying to make the argument for you in my mind as I was preparing this evening that if it was a detached garage, you would need a minimum of, what is it, four feet, uh, from the side yard.
Right.
So, I don't-
It's not a-
It's sixteen, no, no, I, I know it's not. I know, I understand what you're asking for. I'm only, I'm just asking you the question that this is a structure with the be, with the supports right on the property line going, it looks next to the house, I don't know whether it's attached to the house or not.
Yes, it is to the property line, yes.
So, that-
Granted, it would have to meet the building requirements.
It's okay.
It would have to, uh, you know, meet, i- if you did grant it, it would have to meet, um, you just can't, you just can't bolt it to the concrete. You'll have to do-
No, no, if we grant, it's going to be, it's going to, there's a whole issue about the carports and whether or not they meet structural.
Oh, yeah.
But, but I'm just more concerned about the, the zoning issue, about the proximity on the property line attached or near the house. And I understand what you want.
Right, sir. It's like open, so it's not like, you know, it's not restricting any access to any property lines. It's just like, you know, the roof, and they could pass through it.
Yes, I understand. It's restricting, the ord, we have an ordinance that talks about structures and buildings on your property. And we say we don't want structures built on the property line, we want offsets. I'm trying to think of least restrictive by making the analogy, if it was a detached garage, the minimum side yard would be four feet.
Four feet, yes.
No, and it, I got what you want. There are four other members, let's see what they have to say, or any questions that they have on it. Members of the board, any questions? I mean-
Just, you're, in regards to the setback from the side setback, is your sixteen feet in order to have two cars parked there or less, I mean, next to each other?
Yes, there's only seventeen. Yes, only ha, the width is only seventeen feet.
Yeah, well, you know. But that, that was my question, is, uh, it says eighteen by seventeen on the, on the posting, and then sixteen by eighteen on the plan, so I don't know what, which one we're following. It's a foot off. It's a foot off in the-
Yep.
Which, whatever way that it is. I guess wondered if it could be narrower to-
If it's narrower, you cannot park two cars.
Well, I, I guess that is.
Well, that's, that's where I was going, if you get rid of the four feet, then you got a one car, maybe.
Right.
Can you address the hardship? It seems your application is a personal hardship.
Yeah, my wife is arthritis, and if it's only to just, uh, uh, like, prevent the snow becoming so she cannot, like, you know, shovel the snow. I'm, uh, most of the time in New York, because she's by herself, she has to bring the kids to the school. And if it's a snowstorm, right, to get the cars out of there, there's no, like, you know, maybe I could call five o'clock in the morning, so I'm wanting the morning to shovel the snow out before she can move out and bring the kids to school.
So, it's a personal hardship then?
It's a person, no, no, there's no question, it's a personal hardship. It's nothing to do with the shape, topography, soil condition. Uh, it's a three-family dwelling, I don't- Okay. Was there anyone here in favor of this petition? Was there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, members of the board, what do you want to do? Petition to grant, um, petition to deny? I think we heard from you, Director of Planning, is there anything else you can say?
If you decided to approve it, um, I would request that you would, um, condition that it is for cars and not for, uh, storage.
Okay.
Because, you know, those things can creep into being storage.
Sean Michael Leach. You guys did the plan. Okay. Okay, motion to deny, motion to grant, what do you want to do?
I move to deny, please, Tom, it doesn't meet the conditions for a variance.
Okay. Motion to deny, Jim Corkin's, second.
Second.
Second, John Frank, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? I'm sorry, sir, your petition is denied. Denied, so your petition has been denied, so you can't put the carport up there yet. You have the right to appeal our decision if you want. Or you can maybe rethink what you want to do. But the, the dimensions that you have, you didn't submit sufficient evidence for the board to consider, uh, granting of a variance. Okay? Okay, thank you. So, let's see. Agenda item number seven. John R. Cabral, care of Jeffrey Maderis Esquire, North Side Front Street, Lots D one nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. Variance request to subdivide three existing merged lots into two lots, leaving existing single-family on D one twenty and twenty-one, while constructing a single-family on D one nineteen, waiving requirements in the R eight district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here representing, uh, well, first of all, for the record, my name is Attorney Jeffrey Maderis with the firm of Burke Espinola and Van Colen, uh, law offices here in the city of Fall River. Uh, we're representing Mr. Cabral with regard-
Okay.
Representing Mr. Cabral. Representing Mr. Cabral with regard to, um, going for a variance to, as you explained, to, uh, subdivide, uh, three merged lots, uh, into two, leaving a single-family dwelling on one lot and creating a lot that was, um, in existence before the zoning change. So, um, as I really-
Then you heard my discussion.
I was just going to say, thank you very much for, um, it seems as though, uh, the petition that Mr. Aguirre was representing that is in the same, uh, has the same issue that Mr. Cabral has. Mr. Cabral, when he purchased his-
I think these lots abutted at one point in time because the, Amorin showed up as an abutter in the, uh, in the D.
That is correct.
Why would I know that? Go ahead, yeah. Go ahead.
But that, that is, that is correct. So, what it is, is, uh, in doing the research for this D one twenty-one and D one twenty, I presented the board with the deeds that go with the properties, D one, D one twenty-one and D one twenty. One is unregistered and the other one is registered.
Registered land, book thirty-eight sixty-nine, Land Court.
So, uh, when Mr. Cabral and his, uh, ex-wife purchased the property in nineteen seventy-nine, they constructed a single-family dwelling.
Did you look at the deeds?
Yes.
Until it got into his name alone, they could have been okay with it. But when, go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to make my presentation-
No, no, I'm just, I just want to make sure, because it was, I was like, what do you hear? Then I says, ah!
That's, that's exactly, so, Mr. Cabral wasn't aware, um, that there was an issue until he went to the building inspector to obtain a building permit. At that point, the building inspector says, I think you have a merger issue. And he informed Mr. Cabral that he would have to come before this board to seek a variance to, uh, see what we could do, uh, to, um, get the variance. As I explained to Mr. Cabral what had happened, uh, in nineteen ninety-six, when he purchased the property from an estate, he paid thirty thousand dollars for the property. The attorney that, uh, did the deed or did the work for Mr. and Mrs. Cabral, who no longer practices in this area, was not a known real estate attorney. So, I think, uh, he was not given the correct information that if Mr. and Mrs. Cabral would have put the property into one of their names or into a realty trust, we would be here today seeking a waiver of the sidelines and setbacks versus just the, um, the variance to subdivide the merged parcel. I apologize for the confusion of my plan that was submitted by, uh, C.S. Kelly Lanceres. Patriot Properties was wrong, they have it down as a business local, but it's not. I went online, looked at the, uh, J I S map, and this is R eight, so that's why my petition says R eight. If I was business local, we'd be all set, we'd have the, uh, correct amount of frontage as well as the square footage. So, doing further research, uh, that's why we're here. And it's because of the, the law of merger. With regard to the hardship that Mr. Cabral faces, I know, uh, Ms. Marasette always says it's not a financial hardship, which we're not arguing here. We're arguing best use with regard to the property and the fact that this was a lot of record up until nineteen ninety-six. By error, it was put in Mr. Cabral's name and Mrs. Cabral's name. Also, uh, Mr. Cabral divorced his wife in two thousand and nine. And going online and looking at his separation agreement, the two divorce attorneys had no idea with regard to the merger principle because Mr. Cabral paid his wife a considerable amount of money for that lot because they always thought it was a buildable lot. So, um, we are making the argument that the hardship is the best use of the property and the shape of the, uh, lot, even though it's rectangular, where the house is located, the best use would be to allow Mr. Cabral to build a house that fits within the construction envelope that is shown on the plan that we submitted. There's off-street parking for two cars, the sidelines, thirteen feet on each side, as well as the setback, uh, meets the requirements, but we just, uh, went for a variance waiving all dimensional requirements.
Yes?
That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Maderis. Any questions, members of the board?
I, I know we'd be very hesitant to grant a very, waiving all dimensional requirements without knowing exactly which ones are proposed.
Well-
I, I mean, if, if, if the statement is added to it that, and build in accordance with the plan submitted, that, then I, then we have an idea of what's actually proposed.
Mr. Corkin, uh, I would say that this is the actual building envelope that's proposed.
And what about lots D, D one twenty-one and D one twenty, where that is in relation to?
The, the plan is drawn incorrectly, in my opinion, based on the aerial photography. Based on the aerial, the existing house is, looks like it could be like right on the property line or within five feet- or within five feet of the property line, depending on the shadow. Um, it looks like, it looks like this house on 21 and 20 is, it's, it's within a few feet of the thing, so... You have, you need to get a variance for that, but you don't know what it is.
Well, if that's, if that's the case, after hearing, um, Mr. Agia's presentation, and since he's coming back next month with another plan, and for clarification purposes because of the fact that the surveyor made a mistake with regard to the zone and the plan is incorrectly drawn...
Well, it was noticed correctly.
Oh, I know it was noticed correctly, but with regard to the plan, so we can see exactly what the, what the, uh, sidelines and the area on, on both lots would be, I'd ask that.
And, and the plan should reflect, in my opinion, to echo Mr. Corkins, um, the board's kind of getting out of the habit of just saying waiving all dimensional requirements.
Okay.
Uh, and you've noticed they're being very specific, so, um, uh, 'cause...
So get the list of all the variances from the R8 district that you require, if that's something that you're thinking about.
And a scaled plan that's accurate.
If the board thinks that they wanna let you come back, or the board wants to say no tonight, that'll...
Because I would say that would be frontage, the sidelines, as well as area. Those would be what we would be asking to waive, but as you...
No, but you don't know without a, without a measured drawing.
Without a measured drawing.
If you request it, we'll recog, uh, move to...
So if you are, so if you, so you have Jim Corkins, but let me see if anybody's here in favor or opposed to the, then we'll... Was there anyone here that came out this evening in favor of this petition? Was there anyone here opposed, you're in favor of it? Wait, wait, wait. This gentleman behind you is in favor. Will you identify yourself and tell us?
Um, so, I'm actually, it's, it's, I'm President Cabral.
Okay.
Um, so...
So you are in favor of your father's petition, okay. Opposed to it? Mr. Sevigny, say?
Well, I'm opposed to it, uh, because with being, uh, the deck, there's no dimensional, they're waiving all sidelines and all, no, R8, so they can...
Alright, so what, what Attorney Maderis is asking for, because he got the quick education from Attorney, from Mr. Agia.
He got a lot of great tonight. He gave him a lot of great.
I did, thanks, David. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Wait a minute, he's gonna get disbarred now, practicing. But they want to come back with a more detailed plan at next meeting. Uh, so his attorney, Maderis, has made that request, uh, but I wanted to make sure that those of you that were opposed to it understood that he's making that motion and the board may tell him to come back with a more detailed drawing. So we're not, we may not act on it, but I want to make sure that your group that's opposed to the development in that area knows about it and you have an opportunity to come back and speak. Or you can say you're opposed to that happening this evening and you want the board to vote and deny the petition. And I, no, no, I know that you're not the spokesman, but I just, I wanted to put it, make clear where I was going with, I understand you decide what you want to tell me. Thank you. I'll give you both the opportunity to speak.
Okay. I'm not opposed, I would, I think that the, uh, if they can come back with something that logically shows what they can do it.
Okay, thank you. Madam?
I'm opposed to it because, like, what would logically, the zoning is 8,000 square feet. I've lived in that neighborhood since 1964 at 354 Street. Mr. Cabral actually purchased that property from Mrs. Pacheco, who had the way, the estate, um, sold that piece of property to him. It was on his side of their house. And, um, I mean, that lot is very, very narrow. I don't, it, that would be an eyesore. And, um, I mean, the zoning is R8. Like, I've worked hard all my life, and I'm sure Mr. Cabral has too. That, that, like, finding a house is probably the biggest investment a person can make. I want, I work hard all day long. I want to come home. I, when my parents died 30 years ago, I bought that, that house from my siblings. And I want to come home. That's the neighborhood I bought in, R8, uh, R8 neighborhood. And when you start chiseling away at this one, I mean, he's, he's not asking for a variance of 200 feet. He's asking for almost 2,000 feet. No, 2,000 feet, it's 50, it's 52,000, 5200 feet, I'm sorry, 5200 feet lot. The zoning is 8,000 square feet. He's asking for a lot. He's a good neighbor. I'm a good neighbor too. No, like, I mind my own business, he minds his own business. It's not a personal thing, you know? Uh, his son supporting him, of course you would support your family, you know? I worked hard. I've really worked hard to, to keep that house. If you drive by my house, I'm a single person and I do a good job there. I paint my house, I work hard, and, um, they're talking about off-street parking. My neighbor, the neighbor between Mr. Cabral and my house, there are seven adults there, there are seven cars. They're parked from the beginning of my driveway in front of that piece of property he wants to have divided, divided up. To the right of my house, there's a family of four. They actually have 10 vehicles there, two of which are tractor-trailer truck cabs. Now how do you get away with that? Like, I don't understand it. And, and, like, that neighborhood is just being like, like squeezed out, squeezed out. We've got the South Coast Market District, which is very, very nice. The traffic flow in, on Broad Street is crazy. I can't get out sometimes to take a left onto Jefferson Street because of the Atlantis Charter School. Um, do I have to drive all the way around? Like, why do I have to do that? Like, like, my neighbor next door parks his tractor-trailer right on my bedroom window. I like to have my curtains open. I like the sunlight, and why do I have to close my curtain all the time? Because he, like, if he turned his head, he would look right into my bedroom window, which is probably 15 feet away from my house. The airbags walk at 1:00 in the morning. Try, try being asleep and having airbags walk at 1:00 in the morning when you're trying to sleep. I just want my neighborhood, at least keep it the way it is right now. I think I work hard, like many people do in the neighborhood. But, like, why would this be allowed? It's gonna hurt me financially too, because people want some, like, a little bit of space. I just want a little bit of space and I don't want houses prammed in. If he's allowed to do that, the house between my house and his house, there's actually a lot that same size. Now what if that neighbor decides, you know what, I think there's a little extra money here too, you know? We're out in the hallway. His lawyer was trying to convince us that that was a, um, like a business legal whatever zone. I've lived there since 1964. I mean, sure, I was a four-year-old kid at the time, so I don't know what the zoning laws back then. But the three of us stood firm and we said, no, that's an R8 zone. Like, why would that one particular lot be zoned business, right? Then he claims, um, ignorance...
Alright, let's not make it personal. Let's, so, your zoning, your objection, let me, let me see if I can sum it up. No, no, it's okay. You live there. You're a director butter. I understand that. It's an R8 district. You need 80-foot frontage, 8,000 square feet. If you were here for my discussion about merger, the lots have merged. The request that we've got right now, I've heard what you said, you're opposed to his motion to continue it. You want the board to vote this evening and either, you want the board to deny it.
Deny, yes, please.
Thank you. Madam?
I have to agree with what Robin has said. I've lived there 50 years, and I fought and been down in front of this board numerous of times for a piece of property that I own across the street from me, because every time they sold it, again, personal, they, they want to put a business or a house there, so my late husband and myself bought this house so this wouldn't happen again. We moved into the Maplewood area, we bought a house there 50 years, brought up my children because that was our neighborhood. Maybe 10, no, 15 years ago up the street, we had the same cir- circumstance. Somebody wanted to sell their house and build a, a, a house to their parents. My late husband agreed. Mr. Maderis was the attorney for that, that piece of property. We let it go. They never moved into that house. They sold the house.
You will hear, you will hear this board talk about things that are personal.
I understand that.
Personal items are not, are not a consideration that the board should consider.
I understand that.
I mean, I felt very bad for the man with the carport, but it didn't meet the requirements.
I understand.
So...
And, and he's, he's a good neighbor. He's been a good neighbor for many years.
I got it. But you're opposed, you're opposed to Attorney Maderis's request to come to next meeting. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else opposed to the petition? Okay, so that's what we've got. We've got some neighbors that are opposed. The board, uh, Mr. Attorney Maderis wants to come back before the board with a petition or, or an amended, um, plan, giving the offsets. So we can do a couple of things. We can allow him to come, we can deny that motion to come back and vote on its petition as it is, or we can say no, come back with a amended plan, and we can deal with it next meeting. So, what do you want to do? If we want to act on it tonight based on the facts that we know, that it's an R8 district, the size of the lots, and that it doesn't have a chance of winning no matter what he does, then maybe we should deny it and end the agony for Mr. Maderis and his client, or do we want to come back and look at it next meeting and see if there's some way that, uh, maybe, uh, other circumstances, after listening to the merger argument, says, oh, maybe we should, uh, grant a, a variance for this thing? So, that's what we, that's where we are.
I think based on the lot requirements, 8,000 square feet, even if he comes back, it's not gonna make it, so I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Alright, so Carolyn makes a mo, to deny the motion to come back or just deny the petition in general?
Both.
Okay. So, Carolyn's motion is to deny both the petition, uh, the, the request to come to the next meeting with an amended plan and deny the petition. Second by Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? One, two. John? No. Dan? No, come back. Assad, I agree with you, Carolyn. So it's three to two. The petition is denied. The petition is denied. You're not coming back next meeting, but thank you.
That's understandable.
No, no, I just, I just, I didn't want, listen, don't waste your ti, if it's not gonna happen, don't... Okay, we ready for agenda item number nine?
Yes.
Okay. Antonio Costa, one, no, strike that. Agenda item number eight. Maxwell Rosa, care of Jeffrey Maderis Esquire, 384, 390 Ridge Street, Lot G98, six-month extension request of variance granted with conditions on January 17, 2019 to subdivide the property, leaving a three-family dwelling on each of the two lots in an A2 district.
Good mor, uh, good evening, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. I was here last year, uh, with regard to this petition. Um, we have, uh, the petitioner has done considerable amount of work. Uh, the reason why we're seeking a six-month extension is because of the fact of, uh, the work that needed to be done to achieve what the variance, uh, what the, uh, petitioner...
It was a variance that was granted.
It was a variance that was granted.
So the most we could give you was six months.
That's, there's a, there was a retaining wall, um, there was heavy-duty excavation that had to be done. Uh, they had to, um, get a...
Is this centered around the utilities, separating the utilities?
They had to get a contractor that had the ability to have a large excavator, pick up a smaller excavator to lift it five feet, to put it into the yard, to, um, split the utilities. Just because of the retaining wall, the stairs that was on the original site, um, the, uh, utilities have been separated from what my client has told me. Uh, what has to be done now is to do the as-built plan. Um, he's trying to get a, uh, an engineer to do the as-built plan to show where the...
So you've done some work on it.
He's done considerable amount of work. It's just, um...
I needed an extension completed.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Carolyn, making a motion. Is anyone here in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion to continue six months. Carolyn, second by Jim Corkins, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, six-month extension granted. Thank you, Attorney Maderis. Okay, are we ready for number nine now? Antonio Costa, 126 Show Street, Lot B221. This is a variance request to operate sales slash storage business of 50-unit car lot in the CMD Commercial Mill District, lot size four plus or minus acres. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Cory Pacheco. I'm attorney here in the city with the office, with an office located on Columbia Street.
Uh, this evening I represent Mr. Antonio Costa, who is the owner of, um, of, um, an old mill, actually, on Show Street, and break here tonight, um, requesting variance. Um, he's owned the property for several years now. He's trying to revitalize the area and he's, um, he has different businesses operating out of the mill. Uh, this is currently zoned in a, um, CMD Commercial Mill District, formerly designated as the Industrial Zoning District. And what he's seeking tonight is, he's requesting permission for variance so that he can operate, um, a 50-unit auto sale, uh, you know, retail sale here in the, in this, uh, sorry, I have the wrong plan in front of me. In this...
Commercial Mill District.
In this area. As you can see by the plans submitted by the engineer, there's ample parking and, uh, there's plenty of, of space. However, this is not a right allowed under the...
It's not used allowed under our grid.
Yes. So we're asking permission to, um, for, for use, variance to allow this use. Uh, we don't think, it fits with the neighborhood, the neighborhood's an old neighborhood, as most neighborhoods are in the city of Fall River. Most of the surrounding abutters are not conforming, and so we don't believe that this, uh, auto-retail lot is gonna derogate it off the neighborhood. And again, he's trying, my client's trying to revitalize even that space by having businesses there and offices, so I just think it'll just add, uh, just another benefit to the citizens of the city.
So, the board has the authority to grant a use variance under 86482 subsection grade?
Yeah.
So I don't deny that the board has the authority to do that. The zoning ordinance for this commercial mill district has, it for, doesn't allow that specific use. So for us to get to a discussion about a use variance there, let's talk about the elements of what a variance, what you need for a variance. Is there something about the building, the soil condition, the shape, the topography, um, that's going to get us from all the accepted uses that could happen on this particular building? And it sounds that he's utilizing it from your representation of things that are allowed. Uh, and I think the building was built prior to 1954, so there are some special, uh, uses that can go in there based on that alone. It could have office space of any kind, retail store, outlet, bank, or other financial institution, restaurant, or other eatery, eating place, uses customarily accessory to such uses, and art use, visual and performing, art space, culinary art, retail sales, uh, of art, including gift and specialty shops, adult use as defined in section 86390 is prohibited. Uh, so...
No, he is trying to maximize...
No, I know, but I want you to tell the board...
But there isn't, there isn't a hardship per se regarding the topography or the soil or any of those conditions. Uh, just a matter of use, and we don't think it'll derogate it from the neighborhood, and we think a nice, uh, you know, retail outlet for vehicles will actually make the neighborhood a little prettier. Pretty cars usually, you know, catch your eye, but there isn't a hardship per se.
Thank you.
We're not repairing.
Right, it's just...
No, no, I, I, I know exactly what you want to do. If it was zoned differently, maybe you should come before... She's excluded from coming before the planning board, but maybe you should talk to the planning board about getting it rezoned, uh, so you can do that. But this current zoning doesn't allow it, but I'm only one guy on the board. Let's see if anybody's here in favor of the petition. Is there anyone here opposed to the petition? Members of the board, any questions about this particular project? I should ask the director of planning, the board.
Um, I, I find that the plan, um, that Mr. Gordatsky did, he just kinda threw in 50 spaces where you could. Um, and I kind of, you know, I've bought cars for many years and I, and I, and I would have thought that you would have concentrated, the plan is, is very poorly done, to be honest with you. Um, maybe you directed him that way, I don't know, but I, I would have tried to figure out, because I've been by the side, I've looked at the Google photos, you've got other businesses here, um, are, are you got other businesses?
I'm asking for 50, I'm probably never gonna have 50.
No, but, but you're, you're showing, you're showing where they go...
Let's forget about the number.
You're, you're showing, you're, you're showing, if, if, if I had a, when the building commissioner goes, he's like, oh, you have 50. Uh, this is, you're showing the layout of what you want. I, I would have consolidated them in a smaller area because, you know, this isn't representative of what you're going to do.
No, 'cause I'm not gonna come right across. I'm not gonna have 50 cars. I'm probably just gonna utilize this corner here, and that's pretty much all I'm gonna do. I'm just a small dealership.
Then why do you need 50?
I normally, I right now have fourteen eighty South Main Street, used to be the old South End Toyota.
Right.
Okay, so I am leasing that out now to a dentist's practice.
Right.
So we are gonna spend about two hundred and fifty grand there to upgrade that property. There was a vacant lot on the side, so I'm building a house there.
Right.
So I'm looking to move my dealership, just sales, over to Show Street. So I don't necessarily need fifty cars. Why he located it here, I don't know. I said I'm gonna utilize just the corner. And I could even come down this side over here. I also have cars I could put way in the back. They don't need to be up front.
I, I would have preferred to see a plan. I would have preferred.
He was like, I don't think it really matters, you know, if I could just, I'll just put them up front. But I didn't think that it was gonna raise an issue. So I said, yeah, okay, that's fine.
He's the Director of Planning. He's not a voting member of the zoning board.
I'm not a voting member. I, I would have, I would have felt that it makes a better case to, to show what you're gonna do versus just showing that it can fit and say, hey, I'm gonna, I wanna do here and then I'm gonna do storage over here. And then it leaves, oh, well, because the question is, well, but, you know, people are gonna park here that, that work here.
Well, they have, they have this whole, they're able to park this, on this whole front line. There's also all parking spaces here.
The limited, the limited issue. I don't wanna talk about, okay, stop.
No, no, no.
This is a site plan review. The issue is, request for a variance, a use variance.
But I, I believe it is germane to, Mr. Chairman, because it's germane in that it, you have to look at the impacts of this to other things.
So you said, the way it's constructed, you don't particularly like. If we're thinking of granting it, it shouldn't be in this fashion. A new plan should be drawn if we grant it. That concentrates it in a certain area away from the, the general.
That makes the rest of it usable because it's not, because he clearly says he's not gonna do this.
I know that.
So he should do.
And it's gonna be some kind of site plan review.
I'm not gonna use fifty cars across the front. And if I was to use fifty cars, the way the engineer has this, it's not even close. My fifty cars luckily if it comes this far. So it, it, this is like, this is like a whole acre. Fifty cars is not gonna fill up, you know, a whole street front acre. But why it's like this, this is what I'm seeing also. I didn't take, think that it was gonna be an issue. But yes, I can put cars pretty much anywhere. I have a back lot that's empty, that's not being used at all. I can, I mean.
I just felt that would be more representative to show that, how this will combine with future uses. Cause this doesn't.
Where you see, where you see the existing building in the front, that is all parking in the front.
Oh, I know it is.
Oh, okay.
But you're, you're proposing it to be an auto dealership.
Um, well, yes.
Based on his plan.
Right. Well, not the whole, not.
No, but that use on part of.
I know, the way, the way it shows here, but that's not correct. Cause if you were to put fifty cars, you would not go across that whole thing, not even close, not even halfway.
Do you want to, want to table it next week until we get a better?
If I could do that, that would be fine too. And I would have him draw, you know, cars better.
I don't know.
Since you said it's gonna be done this way.
So Attorney Pacheco, are you making that motion that you'd like to table it?
I'm asking my client, I, do you want to come back with a rendition that accurately represents your vision for the auto sales here on this site? Do you wanna do that? Because this way we can be more, you know, persuasive to the board.
I can, I can, absolutely.
I'd like to request that we modify the plan and come back next month if possible.
So, members of the board, yeah, Dan?
Is there any regulation how close it upon?
That's, that's way.
He's gonna do, he's gonna do it on the, if he does it on the existing asphalt, then it, it doesn't, that's the existing condition. If he, if he spent, if he went past that, then it would, it would open up another thing. And I know he doesn't wanna do that.
No.
It's a very, it's a very large lot.
But, so the question is, do we want to grant the motion or do we want to act on the petition in that, the petition and the use is some, that's really where we are. Same thing like before. Do you wanna go, do you want him to come back and propose something if, based on what we've heard and the use issue that's before the board is something that the board is not comfortable with? Then don't let them go through the process of doing an amended plan if we're already there. So, so it's up, it's up to the board. If the board wants to grant the motion to come back next, next meeting with an amended plan to review it and then make the determination, that's fine. If the board is comfort, is, has the determination that because it's not an accepted use in the area, that there's no reason to come back, then we can also act on that. So whatever the board wants to do.
Mr. Chairman, I find that where there's been no identified hardship, that we have no choice but to deny the petition.
Okay, so Jim Corkins, no, no identified hardship, therefore denial of the petition. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, Carolyn Maraset. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four. Dan? Yes? All right. So your petition for a use variance on this particular one twenty-six Show Street has been denied. Thank you for your presentation. Let's see there, I think you've got the next one, right?
Yeah.
So number ten, Antonio Costa, one ninety-seven Sterling Street, Lot D sixteen fifty and eighty-two. This is a variance request to subdivide the parcel containing two existing dwellings into two lots, leaving a dwelling on each lot, waiving requirements in the R eight district. Lot size is eleven thousand six hundred eighty-four plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Pacheco. I'm attorney here in the city of Fall River. I'm here with my client, Mr. Costa, who owns the property and where we are requesting a variance. The property, as, as the chairman just said, is about almost twelve thousand square foot lot. It's had a single-family structure on it since the eighties and an existing two-family. This lot is.
You answered my question. Since the eighties.
Nineteen eighties and nineteen twenty-five, I believe, yes.
Because my question was going to be, why, why, why are you doing it as a variance instead of as a special permit under eighty-six, four twenty-three subsection B?
Yes, it's nineteen eighty-seven. It's had.
So that's, okay, so that's why you're doing it as a variance, okay.
So the structures, I'm sorry, so it's an R eight district, residential R eight district designated for single-family homes, even though we have had this existing two-family, okay, since nineteen twenty-five. What my client's requesting is that the board allows us to subdivide the lot so that each structure has its own lot. They already have separate utilities, you know, it's already all separated. We are, as such, our, our petition is requesting to waive minimum lot area for both lots. It should be eight thousand square feet in each lot. We have fifty-two seventy-four and sixty-four hundred. And I think you guys have the design in front of you. Also, we are requesting that we waive side yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks on both property, both lots. And we'll need to waive the, we're requesting permission to waive the minimum front width on one of the lots.
Proposed lot number one has only sixty-five feet of frontage, so you need a waiver of frontage on that one.
Yes, the waiver is supposed to be eighty according to the zoning.
Yeah, zoning board, so you got fifteen-foot waiver on lot number two, lot number one.
Yes, and then of course the use because the existing two-family, if it's gonna be on its own, it's obviously not allowed a two-family.
Pre-existing.
In an R eight, but it's pre-existing.
But if we make the analogy, under eighty-six, four twenty-three subsection B as a special permit, then you would have been able to do it if that all, if the other building wasn't eighty-seven. The only things that we needed to determine was that the division is made in a way to maximize the use of the proposed lots, specifically access parking and yard area. So what you've done, what your proposal is to separate them. And I think you're proposing what four parking spaces on.
On the two-family, yes.
Two-family and two parking spaces on lot number two, the single family.
Yes.
So they exist. Oh, the parking's existing.
Yeah.
Parking looks like it existed.
I thought, I thought, because this was a separate lot when, I'm sure Attorney Pacheco did the title to the property. There were, there's this one, there's this one thing that I can't find in it.
How does a single family get filled on a lot with a two-family?
There were three, there were three separate lots at the time. There was a deed that was conveyed out with, with these parcels on it and this one. This got combined, Lot D six eighty-two got combined. And there's another one, Lot D sixteen eighty-three that I can't find. So I don't know whatever happened to eighty-three, it doesn't show up as merged. But that's, that's how this conglomerate happened.
We're just seeking now just to find the two structures.
So now, all they wanna do now is divide it. And because of the eighty-seven construction of the single family, they didn't qualify under the nineteen fifty-four item. So that's where we are. It is an R eight district. If you keep it together, then you have truly a non-conforming lot. With this, if you separate them, you've got, neither one is conforming, but if it was a special permit, they could do it as a matter of right. And I guess the argument is that the shape of the lot and the structures on it may rise to the level of the shape, topography, not soil condition, but the shape and the topography with the buildings on it creates sufficient hardship that the board could see its way to grant variance. But I'll leave that to the board. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Mr. Chairman, I move granting of the variance.
Okay. With those, did you, with those dimensional variance requirements on it?
Where would the, as presented.
Okay.
So the minimum lot area, we're requesting to waive, please, the side yard setbacks, the rear yard setbacks.
As shown on the plan.
Yes, exactly.
All right, so if we use everything off the plan, then we'd get the dimensions of what the variance that you've asked for.
Yes, thank you.
Second, Dan Dupire, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Pose none? Okay, that petition is granted with those conditions. Thank you, Attorney Pacheco. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda item number eleven, Old Business ASE Investments LLC, sixty-nine R Alden Street, Lot J twenty-seven-nine. It was tabled on December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen to modify the petition, move to the February twentieth, two thousand twenty meeting for proper advertisement and notification of a butters waiving time to act. So there's not much for us to do administratively. We had to do that, right?
There was a reminder that the deadline for those modifications is this month on the twenty-first. So it's been communicated, so.
It has been, cause Dan just walked out. Okay, okay. Do we have any citizens input? I saw Dan with the paper. No? No? Mr. Villa? No? Mrs. Villa? No? Approve minutes from the November, are they ready? No? So we don't have minutes from November or December. Do I get a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, Jim Corkins, second?
Second.
Second, Carolyn Maraset, all those in favor? Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty is hereby closed. Thank you.